All right, it is five thirty one P M. I'll go ahead and call the order of this meeting of Bloomington Council's Climate Action Resilience Committee. I am Chair, Councilmember Matt Flaherty.
Councilmember Cindy Tullip.
Councilmember Hope East Oscar.
And absent tonight is Councilmember Dave Rallo, or at least so far, I'll be expecting to join a bit late at the appointment. Also with us, we have supporting Ashkuwak Deputy City Attorney, Deputy City Council Attorney, is that?
Yeah, Deputy Attorney for the Council.
Deputy Attorney for the Council, thank you. And also in the clerk's office, as we meet now. Invited guests this evening include from the Economic Sustainable Development Department, the Director.
David Resepin. And then Sean Yeh, Assistant Director of Sustainability. And Mikaelon Lich, San Antonio Department Director.
Thank you, and I'll go ahead and, well, actually, also, David, David Headle, the Director of the Planning and Transportation Department. So I'll go ahead and run through our agenda. We have updates from committee members, then a section, updates from city staff, which is the primary focus of this evening's meeting, with a variety of updates related to, and discussion items related to the Climate Action Dashboard, which launched maybe a month or two ago. General tracking of our progress on the city's climate action plan, we're about four years in, or maybe I guess three years in, to the city's climate action plan implementation phase. Then we continue our discussion transitioning gas power offered equipment to electric equipment. Been ongoing discussion of the committees for some time. We have some action items, but we haven't had a chance to touch base with staff on those yet. Then we'll also have discussion of the budget breakdown for the 1.6 million or so that's budgeted for climate action plan implementation. And that will conclude the updates from city staff. Also on the agenda tonight, we have an item related to climate action plan actions regarding urban agriculture. And that is at the request of Miss Spear, who had been with us tonight, and then also a period for general public comment, scheduling, and adjournment. And I'm wondering, just noting that a lot of folks from the public office here this evening, maybe by showing hands, are folks here specifically for the urban agriculture item, the majority, perhaps? If you'd be okay with folks, I might propose reordering our agenda to move that ahead of the updates from committee members and city staff. If that seems okay. Okay, seeing no objection, we'll just consider that amended. So yeah, we can actually start with that item. I can give the briefest of context and backgrounds, and then would actually invite Miss Spear to join the table and share. So again, as I mentioned, we added this as an agenda item when Miss Spear reached out to the committee with some background and details about proposed uses on her property, I believe, to the covenant of the neighborhood, et cetera. And how they might be related to portions of the city's private action plan regarding urban agriculture. I've also touched base with the planning staff about it, which is why Director Headle has agreed to join us. And some members of the environmental commission and environmental sustainability as well. So with that, I'd actually ask you to go ahead and join our, the table here, and we'll have opportunity for public comment on this item as well. But really, I just want to better understand the issue and what it is you were interested in coming to committee about.
So the things that we already passed out, but we wanted to pass out again, and that's one of the things that's new is how, what we've been doing over the past several years. And what we'd like to do, how it aligns with the climate action plan. We do happen to be in a residential neighborhood, and that causes conflicts with zoning ordinances. When we started this several years ago, we were given a verbal okay to go ahead and do everything for, for free. By if someone wanted to give us a donation, we could accept a donation and our mission. And our mission is sustainability and urban gardening education. The only reason why we actually started this is because we had so many people every single week walking down the street and stopping and asking us questions for hours and hours. Multiple people, neighbors, not only from the covenant of your neighborhood, but from Bryant Park would come and stop from, I'm forgetting what the neighborhood next to us is, but we're sort of like on the edge of, from Runway, we're on the edge of a bunch of different neighborhoods, and we are right on one of the Greenway paths, and so.
There's always so much time that we could spend educating people for, and taking our time away from gardening and taking care of the half acre of raised beds that we take care of that produce five to six thousand pounds of organic trees and veggies. It's a lot of work, and that's why I moved back to Bloomington was to assist my sister in building this. And I am the Chair of the C A C, the Climate Action Committee, sorry, Citizens Action Committee with the Waste Reduction District, and I'm also Committee Member on B C O S.
Sorry, can you please introduce yourself?
My name is Matthew Austin.
Yeah, so with this outpouring of questions and interest and people saying, could you could you educate us on these different topics? Oh, I see, you know, what is that? Oh, it's a worm composter. Oh, how do you do that? We started going, well, how can we do this on a larger scale? And so we decided to open up a nonprofit with the understanding that we needed to do everything for free via and that's why we started getting grants or or if someone wanted to donate money to the nonprofit. We came to find out this past spring that this was not, now not acceptable. And so we've been told that we need to stop doing what we're doing. And so now we're here before you saying, we love, you know, we have volunteers that want to continue. We have students, we have a connection with N C C S E, they want to continue to send us.
So on this page, you can see some of the groups we've already worked with. Right now, a single page, and this document, which we sent through an email, is the documents showing the climate action plan, all the things we're already working on, the climate action plan addresses. And the last one is our statement to you.
And yes, and we understand we're in a neighborhood. We understand that there are, we've tried to make it the we understand that there are, we need to, it's not a rural farm that we need to follow, you know, protocol and procedure within the realms of an urban, nice urban neighborhood. We understand that our neighbors want to have everything stay small. And so I, as we've been designing things, I'll say, no more, it's a girl scout troop, I'm, you know, you cannot have more than ten girls come, same boy scout troop, or we've been trying to keep it small. We did explore the idea of having, we had Marlins kindergarten and first grade classes, because they wanted to see what were the possibilities in a small urban environment, what they could do at a school. And I said, it would be best for the kids to come and actually see the infrastructure, so when I'm talking and teaching them, they know what that post looks like, the fence, and why we need to protect from the deer. Or maybe they want to experiment and have the deer eat their stuff. And so we did have a group come, sixty kids, but I told the school bus, you may drop them off and you have to immediately leave. I told all the neighbors, this is what is going to be happening. Are you okay with this? We kept them all tucked away in the backyard. We are.
So it was a big success, and we all, we see the climate action plan, and it says we want all these things done, the city wants it, and the city council voted for that. But then there's all this, all these things with the U D O that do not correlate to that, so they're rubbing up against each other. And so we have felt harassed, bullied, picked on. We've been treated different than other citizens by planning transportation throughout this process. And so it's very confusing for us when there's a climate action plan, this is, we want all this stuff done by twenty thirty, and we're taking massive action on it. And then we're getting, once again, bullied, harassed, picked on by the city that's also telling us this is what we want. So it's very confusing for us, and it's extremely frustrating at the same time when there's all these grand plans, but we're seeing very little movement by the city on this call.
Okay, oh, so if I can clarify, in terms of structure, I'm going to invite staff to weigh in, if either planning or E S D had thoughts preliminarily, and invite committee members to ask questions, staff or Miss Spear, Mr. Austin. But can I just also clarify that, so it's your business, the nonprofit garden question, you're seeking, like, what specifically are you seeking change in the U D O? Is it a, to change it and allow use?
Right, so right, yeah, so right now, we are in violation of home occupation, because home occupation only is within four walls of your home. You cannot show or see or do anything. You cannot have anyone come to your home. It has to be you're sowing by yourself, or you're an accountant by yourself. You cannot have anyone enter your home or be outside. You can't, nothing can look different. So urban agriculture doesn't, does not fit in that, or urban agriculture education does not fit in that, especially education. If you're going to do hands-on education, which is what a lot of kids, adults, that's what they're asking for, they want to see, they want to do, they need to be able to see and do. So we're asking for, there's, I know one of the climate action plans is to reduce the zoning, change zoning, reduce zoning barriers for urban agriculture. And there's a lot of educational, education initiatives in here, so we're asking for the ability to help with these educational initiatives in a residential neighborhood.
Okay, so the big ask would be to be exempted from the U D O because we are doing all the stuff that's moving both the climate action plan, because in the city of Bloomington, all you have to be is a complainer and you get listened to, but if you do good things, you don't get any benefit for doing good things.
Yeah.
Right, and so we, you know, the big ask is, the exemption of the U D O because of all the things that we're doing on that, the expansion of that would be anybody that is doing the farm within city limits, there would be some sort of litmus test, they'd have to pass these tests in order to qualify to be exempt, but ultimately, that's only a patch, so that, because we know the U D O can take a while to get updated. That would just be a temporary ban date while the U D O gets updated so that it is, works with the climate action plan. Or the other ask would be, let's just elevate the climate action plan above the U D O, because if we don't have a city, what's the point of having the U D O? Because there's a U D O city if there's no, if there's no plan to live on.
Yeah.
So that's our question, is what is more important, the climate action plan, to replace it, or the U D O, what seems to me to be pointless for us?
I would say, well, they're different, and it's important to them. So a plan is a vision of a general set of principles, actions, goals, would like to achieve. If it is not law, it is not code of the U D O or supersede in all bases, you know, that actually is legal law. I guess I, if they're really, I'd love to hear from maybe planning staff and E S D staff, if you have particular thoughts about relate, obviously, we're talking about the U D O and climate action plan both. In particular, I'm hearing about these multiple dimensions, I'm hearing about urban agriculture and what, you know, is allowed in terms of urban agriculture, what barriers might be there as a use or as an activity, I guess, and then also educational efforts or a home occupation that operates outdoors in some way. So I'm curious to hear more about those things, and again, I mean, after thinking staff on that, I'd like to invite committee members to ask questions of this as well, if that sounds okay. Does staff have, Ed, do you have to share?
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
So the U D O prevents people from having educational events in their homes, and it's the purpose of that so that there's not a lot of traffic in the woods? Is that what the?
I would imagine there are a lot of purposes related to home occupation uses in residential areas, essentially balancing residential character peace and quiet versus business. It's not, you know, it's not mixed use for a reason, so probably that balancing what could be seen as a nuisance essentially or something. But I would imagine Mr. Headle probably has more specific thoughts about generally why we don't, or why we are narrow in business uses in residential zones. But I think the planning staff's probably the first to ask.
I mean, what we were told in our variance, our meeting with planning and transportation, is there is for outdoor businesses, there is a fear of someone, if it's open to all outdoor businesses, then there's this fear that someone's going to bring in a bunch of trucks and start working on them, and it's going to become this big eyesore. We're asking for a top, for a, for very defined rules where it's for an exemption, an exception for educational, you have to fall within these rules, it's small, you know, it's small classes, it's, you know, it's meeting the climate action plan, it's helping, you know, further the education.
Not visiting up the neighborhood, because we have plenty of neighbors that have parties that have farmer calls showing up than we do, the little things that we, yeah, so it's very convoluted.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, let's stop, stop there for now. I recognize, yeah, there may also be other, it sounds like other actions taking place in the context of city government, so if it's not appropriate to comment on certain aspects of this, that's okay.
Sure, I hope, I just feel like David's perspective as the Director of Planning is more relevant. I, no, it's fine, and I just really respect what Garden Quest is doing, and then obviously, it's really incredible we want to bring gardening, lift it up like the Victory Gardens, and so it can be a solution for our community and our residents. Garden Quest was awarded an arts grant for all that's on their property, and we received numerous complaints about it, and I had to notify planning about that, and they, you know, what we did is we drilled into the code because we're required to. That's kind of what our role is in the city, is to make sure that an area of activity we're engaging, that we're maintaining the letter of the law. And I certainly, I, I hope that's not why you felt bullied, but if it is, I apologize. But so, planning staff and art staff went out and, you know, the grant holds, the wall stands, and the art stands. And then the other complaints that I received were forwarded to planning and transportation, the main thing I got there, I wouldn't take one point, and that is that you were given previous permission for commercial activities. I was in E S D from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, and I think that we were having the same conversations at that time, and we were running up against the same pretty clear communication from planning and transportation at that time from this name planner, which is Eric Hoymanich. So I think that was a bit, well, I don't even want to say it's characterization, because I want to remain curious and just say, I'm not sure, I'm curious where the permission that you received yourselves to have, how you come from.
Let's hold on to that, maybe for now, we'll ask questions in a bit.
But again, I just want to say, like, I, this is about the letter of the U D O, and I just personally feel really conflicted about, you know, to sure certain activities, but the gardening activities, I think those were, there was nothing in U D O that's disallowing, it's the educational commercial component. David?
Yeah, that's.
I'm sorry, I meant to call David.
Okay, yeah, please, go ahead.
That's, that's correct. The U D O does allow for urban agriculture, which is exactly what the climate action plan recommends, the U D O allows for. To build up to the finer agriculture in a lot of ways, but to shorten the cultivation of food and or cultural crops. So you can grow food, you can use your residential lot to produce food, that is at all, that's what climate action plans try to encourage. And to do that right now, it's the educational component, the training center, tours, the development of a non-permitted access point, the development along the right of the way of the road that was not permitted. And a number of other things kind of dig into the building practice issue. So I, I have an issue with the idea that the zoning ordinance is not supported, the climate action plan, it does support urban agriculture. And it goes on to define it, and what you're doing as well, you know, so hence the violation. Now, I do appreciate your, your response and your request to me to, for you to talk about, you know, point by point, how we gave the issue, how to address them, make it right. And the fact that you did cease to operate the classes and the trainings and all that, so that's, that's, I think, the bulk of the recent hearing complaints to neighbors, potentially prevent and stop activities. But yeah, that's, that's, in a nutshell, I think, yeah, that's exactly what we're dealing with. The ordinance, and our ordinance is to have home occupation laws, which allows for the running of a business from residential districts when they uniformly pass requirements and restrictions on those, so that they're at least likely to cause damage to their neighbors. And one of those is that, that home occupation, whether you're a software artist, or an architect, or an insurance salesperson, or something like that, that you have that, and it takes place in in a closed environment, in a house, and then also there's no changes to the property that this is going on, that there, you know, substantial traffic to another property and those things. So, you know, those are intended to keep residential neighborhoods traditionally residential, and, you know, your operations will be on that scale as well. So, so that's, that's where the fact of transportation department is trying to.
Yeah, and right, right, as we know, and so that's where we're asking for, if we want to move forward, we have seized, we have seized the decision.
That's, if we can, sorry, no, we should start with maintaining structure here, and have some questions from committee members and and opportunity for public comment as well, as I know some folks are here for that. I have a number, thank you all for your background context, your work, and likewise staff for sharing that context and thoughts. I definitely have a number of questions, but I turn it over to my colleagues. First, would be questions for staff or for Miss Spear or Mr. Austin.
I'm busy, so I don't have a lot of questions. Can you shut them one on one?
Okay. Well, I will ask maybe a couple of clarity things about the U D O and what it allows or doesn't allow with regard to the education piece, so like, would it still be a problem if all of the education was happening inside of a building? Like, that's a question, you know. Like, is it about, like, what the neighbors might be able to see, or is it about, as was mentioned, the idea of a certain number of cars parked on the street in the area?
I know it explicitly prohibits outdoor employment, so if it was taken place inside, I don't know then, I don't have I don't know, I haven't stayed around long enough to actually remember, but I think that there's a component in there that talks about, you know.
Well, I'm trying to find it right now.
Right there, U D O was really good.
So here's, if you want to read it, that's, that's where it says, no customers may come on premises, no employees may. Well, the T C dot work talked about.
Can I ask a clarifying question on, they mentioned the idea of an exemption or exception. I'm not aware necessarily of a mechanism in the U D O to allow, well, to allow for such a thing for a use. My understanding is that uses either have to be allowed by code or not, and we could, for instance, change a use to allow an outdoor home occupation, that theoretically could happen. But under the U D O as it exists today, is there a legal tool or pathway to allow an exemption or exception? Is that possible?
No, that's a great question, and the answer is no. I think that their recourse, I don't want to speak for them, but I think you're here basically to implore the movement towards amending the ordinance. To allow, yeah, what they're given now is not allowed by right and more by random conditional which permit, so.
Nor is it allowed in the, I mean, is it allowed in any zoning district?
No.
Okay.
No.
There's no zoning district that would allow an outdoor occupation like that? I mean, I know it's a residential zone currently, I'm just trying to understand if there's a current use in the ordinance.
There's no existing zoning ordinance, sorry, zoning district that allows for, yeah, cultural uses, with their sort of set of activities that they want to do.
We said earlier that the agricultural uses were not in violation of U D O, it was just the education use, so.
Right. The districts that allow, thank you, this is the case, the districts that allow for education uses don't allow for agricultural uses. But there's not any single district that allows for everything that they want to do.
But currently, they're not in violation because of any of the agricultural uses, it's just the education use.
Correct. Is there, oh, no, go ahead.
Well, I'm just trying to understand, like, after I looked through, like, the allowed use table, like, there's, it didn't look like there was a specific education allowed use, that would just be under home occupation as private educator. Like, how, like, in theory, did that even there? Or how is an educational use going to be a current?
Yeah, I'm not sure. What I am sure of is that staff went over this and searched for the zoning district that had the common meaning that they want to do. And there isn't, which is, which is, to be honest, the pandemic itself will be the problem, that if it exists, no mechanism by which, regardless of whether, you know, what you should talk about, you know, specifically in the zoning ordinance, there's been some kind of wild art history, effectively, we're going to be needing whatever commercial uses, and it's something that does not fit in the ordinance. But a means by which you request to do it, a commercial special district or something like that, and that just doesn't exist in our ordinance.
Is there any limit on the scale of an agricultural operation in a residential zone apart from normal physical, you know, constraints driven by the lot, like setback requirements, for instance, for structures or things like that? Are there any limits to the the magnitude of the agricultural operation?
In residential zone?
Yeah.
Or if I'm, again, I'm new enough, I haven't memorized, but I believe that there's a limit on the, you know, the heat and the panel, it's kind of that, yeah. There's other languages that allows for chickens and so on, but otherwise, it's limited, urban agriculture is limited towards production focused on food or agricultural crops.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, urban agricultural uses shall not include the raising of animals, except as permitted elsewhere in the food use code, which I think refers to the chicken farm section.
Head mark.
Well, you can go for more, I'm just trying to get at this, like, what the real problem is, I'll say, in terms of it being a neighborhood that's having this educational use, whether it is an issue with parking, whether it is an issue with what neighbors might visibly see, and then trying to imagine a solution to that. And, and then, once we imagine a solution, then it's like, well, how does that, how can that work out in code in a consistent way?
Sure.
Then.
It doesn't open the door to things you don't want.
Right, exactly, and so that's, that's what I'm just trying to get at, is to really understand, like.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, clearly, there's not a way in our current code to make this work, so then it's like, well, not why isn't there a way to currently make it work, but what is the biggest problem with it?
I think, yeah, these are some of the questions are trying to drive that, just to understand the current state as well. It sounded like it's both a use and some element of some physical things that are possibly in violation, is that right?
Correct.
But, and then we can think of those as distinct issues, essentially, like, if there were no physical issues, the use would still be an issue, and so, okay.
Right, right, there can be really physical issues.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not full use in any regard, right, with the ordinance in this current one.
I'd like to ask y'all a question.
Yeah, sure.
You mentioned having verbal permission to initiate the use at some level or at some scale. Do you recall?
Yeah, I was sitting, yes, I was sitting in, I was sitting in our blueberry bed talking to Eric, and I know it's a verbal, it's a he said, she said thing. And we talked about, I was, I constantly tried to apply, want to apply for variances, and I go through the, start to go through the process. And then I'm told, and I'm told everyone, I'm planning transportation, is like, this is awesome, this is great. And then, as soon as I'm ready to apply, then I'm told, oh, wait a second, we can't, we can't support you. And so at that time in twenty twenty-one. And so at that time in twenty twenty one, I said, Eric, what can I do? You guys all love this. He said, okay, for me, I'm gonna go and try to work on the U D O. I'm gonna put it on my list for, you know, we're gonna, I'm gonna work on this because I think this education is important. How about you guys can make sure that you are not asking for money for any of the education? If someone happens to give you a donation, that's okay. And so I said, okay, and you can, I changed my website. I, you know, I went to Airbnb and said, I can't charge anything. And they're like, you have to charge a dollar. And I'm like, I can't charge even a dollar. And they're like, well, this is for your, your marketing. Like, I changed up my whole thing. And that's how we've been operating since then. I know I don't have, I'm shame on me, I don't have a paper trail, I thought he wrote it down. I'm I'm sorry. All I want to do is be a benefit to the community. I want to try to help. I want to be a template, I want to be their pilot, um. I I see the need.
Yeah.
So I apologize, we're gonna try, we we, the U D O for us is is very confusing. And we're gonna, we we we're trying to work on these things, so.
So keep in mind, the complaints we're getting are probably from three or four neighbors. We have hundreds of people who have come through the property, who appreciate it with lives. So it's a vast, a lot, much larger amount of people that are for this. That are against it. But once again, the city raises up complainers and doesn't help anybody that's trying to do something good.
All right, thank you. And I mean, I can get the perspective, um, but yeah, just trying to understand the background in terms of, uh. Uh, permissions and and in terms of variances, have have you, with variance? When you pursued the possibility for variance, we started to explore that. Has that always been about the use or or has that been about physical?
That's that's been about the use. And so the physical improvements, we thought. I'll I'll just give you an example, we thought it's the right thing. In the U D O, it talks about you may not have invasive species. You need you need to get rid of poison ivy, you need to get rid of hyuanus. And so we went, we have tried everything as organically as possible. The only way we know how to do this is to put down weed barrier and wood chips. And that's the way, we don't have to put down salt, we don't have to put down vinegar, we're not doing glyphosate. And it works. And so we were like, okay, we're following the U D O because we're getting all along where we were doing stuff. Where we're in violation, we had poison ivy and winter creeper. And this was our only, we thought.
Only recourse.
Only recourse, and then we were like.
Should get rid of it somehow, deal with every single year.
So for us, we were confused because we were following part of, you know, the U D O. But we didn't realize we, this was not, and then we talked to Arborist and they say, well, you need to do your drip line. You know, you need to go up to the drip line of a tree. Well, if your tree is a huge tree like we have, six feet doesn't work. So we're, I guess, yeah, we're.
Oh, good, the challenges.
Yeah, the challenges, but we are going to work on those. But we understand that we need to fix those physical things. We're happy, we just need. The, um, the support of the experts to come, make sure that we're following the letter of the law. But we can't fix the home occupation because we're gray and we're we're not in the black.
Um, noting the time, and this is essentially for an hour and a half, we have a a fair amount of other agendas. I do want to get to public comment on this item. Uh, by showing hands, are there folks here to comment, uh, on this item? Just one?
One question, one point.
Yeah, please go ahead. I have up to three minutes.
Okay. Is is it true?
Yeah.
Ah, Austin. Is it true that if something is not in the U D O, it is automatically not permitted?
Uh, I'm not, we're not gonna engage in back and forth during the public comment and can try to seek an answer to your question after the comment period.
Okay, and then the second thing, um, I'm a retired band director. And when I first started teaching, I also taught private lessons in my home. From what I'm hearing now, was I unknowingly in violation because I had people come to my home and private home. And I'm taught the kids.
Okay, thank you. Is that your comment? Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, do we have any other members of the public who are seeing me comment?
Sure.
Uh, Bloomington recycled this.
Please share your name, who the name is, and we'll let up with your next.
I am Penny Austin.
Thank you.
Bloomington recycled this. However, Garden Quest. Taught me that Bloomington does not recycle these. Or these, or my milk carton, these, or the. People like that. I can't put those, ooh, ice cream. This, now, I rare, I don't have a lot of processed food. This was just a couple days of my onions, my fresh foods. Uh, so anyway, dip cheese. Does not recycle it, but Garden West received a. To do paracycling. Now, Garden Quest did this, Ellie taught me. I'm sorry, she taught a few others, and they are now doing a study. For the city of Bloomington that has a funny U D O. And she taught it outside. I don't know if that was right or wrong. She has these. Uh, bins that are right along, that are on my way home. I'll take this to my house and put it in the right place. And I'll take all of these and put them into paracycling wherever. And she has to tell me every time, my tea, my my little tea, uh, I do rinkers. But my little tea bags, we gotta do a lot, it's a make my own kombucha. But she taught me how to do, um, that those are not recyclable because there's like a little plastic on your tea bags. And you can't put that in the city of Bloomington recycling. But she is single-handedly trying to save the city of Bloomington and the climate and the world. And I think that this committee and the city of Bloomington should try a little bit harder to maybe. Support. Ellen sphere.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, any other members of the public who can comment? Seeing done, um, we'll return to folks for some questions, uh, and then I can maybe transition us. Uh, I just had one follow up, the members of the public that asked about. Uses that aren't specified, um, uh, Mr. Hill, I don't know if you can, uh, speak to that at all. My my sense would be, of course, we can't list everything in the U D O and that, uh, things may require interpretation to determine which category they fall in, that. Could please give more to that.
Yeah, the U D O guides the interpreter staff to look at whatever it is you're talking about. And then find its best match of those issues that are in the U D O. And and then to to, and that's where it falls, so it's allowed if that the use. That matches something on page eleven, then then what page eleven says about, so just for for a lot of these, there's lots of things, so.
Okay, thank you. And can you also clarify what is allowed for a home, uh, occupation use? That that is, uh, compliant with the U D O? There should be some confusion about whether or not, like, clients or folks can can come to a. A home. Do you know about that particular dimension?
Yeah, I, um.
It's okay, it's not, it's all over.
Well, it's not the indoors, um, the the business aspect cannot appreciably change. The outward appearance of property, uh, there is verification on signage, um, new updates, traffic. Um, you know, parking, um.
But like a psychologist?
We could read it.
Oh, sure, like, I'm wondering if it took that about the idea of, like, clients or somebody you're you're serving, if you were a psychologist or designer, or if to to do about that.
Um, what it says in, I'm not sure where I am right now, uh. Checker twenty dot oh three dot oh three oh six. Is home occupation, and then there's exempted uses for home occupation. One is, the following uses are permitted and shall not be regulated as home occupations, and that is childcare, adult daycare. And group care home, small and large, which I think group care homes are only allowed in certain areas of the U D O. Um, and then two says activities that create no external visual changes. And produce no odors, noise, vibration, or other discernible impacts outside the dwelling. Including but not limited to drafting, drawing, typing, writing, and operating telephones, sewing machines, or computers. And those things shall not require a certificate of zoning compliance or conditional use approval. Provided that there are no employees or customers. Um, no employees or customers visit or park vehicles on the premises. No signs are displayed and no deliveries other than those normally associated with residential uses are made to the site.
Okay.
So maybe music would fall, because music would create vibration. But depending on, you know, if it's drums or a whole band, like, it might not actually, like, leave the.
But the cars parked on my property.
Kind of, well, but if the cars are parked on the street out in front, um, I mean, I don't know.
We can see clarity.
I don't know. That was kind of weird, um, it 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 could be that, because you're not allowed to park on unfinished surfaces. So like, if they were just parked near the driveway, then it might not matter. Um, and then. Unless you're exempted above, people have to get a certificate of zoning compliance. So for other home uses, then you could apply as long as it was inside. And so I think that's the problem here, right? That it's not happening inside, but checking out.
Yeah, well, I I I I'm gonna need to. Obviously, there is, so I'm gonna language more closely, but the idea behind home occupations is that if you're a therapist or a music teacher. Or something else that operates on a very low scale, very low volume, you people come to your house, it's not, you know. It it's not something that says you can't teach, you know, select, you know, fifty bucks for the hour or whatever the cost measures is, I don't know.
So the wife goes coming in and putting a seed in a cup.
Please.
I'm sorry.
And I appreciate appreciate the sentiment, but, um, we do need to move on from this item. And what it sounds, so what it sounds like is, um. We, th- there are physical alteration questions that are, uh, being discussed by planning. And and the folks at at Garden West, uh, that are maybe not as much the focus here. It seems like what what the focus for this committee would be, in particular, as committee of the council. Um, as as one of the two pathways essentially that can explore the possibility of of new or changed uses. Uh, within the the unified development ordinance, uh, definitely a lot more to consider and questions on that front in terms of talking more to staff. About what that could look like, what the risks and and challenges are appearing, what, you know, concerns have been from neighbors and that kind of thing. Um, which again, is just really beyond, uh, what we have time to get into tonight, but I think we've helped clarify the issues for, at least for this committee. Um, and have our now in touch, I think, to be able to follow up. Um, and so I think we can maybe wrap this agenda and move on for the next one, if that sounds okay to the meeting members. All good? Uh, very much appreciate you reaching out, uh, to us and and, yeah, your your efforts, uh, on on organic culture and education, absolutely. Um, and so, yeah, I know this is a a tricky issue with the U D O and and, uh. We'll look forward to following up and and having more conversation about, you know, what what considerations, how we can explore the possibility.
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
Public comment, you guys want to?
Yeah, yeah, please go ahead.
Where is this place? It sounds kind of neat.
Um, we're right, we're located right between High Street and College Mallway. Right on Covenant Inter, on the corner of Ross and. Yeah, right there.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for the materials, again, reaching out. Uh, we can follow up via email and and, yeah, I've heard already.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything to ask? Uh, our next item on the agenda then would be updates from committee members, uh. And maybe ask that we keep this pretty brief, so we can, you know, the rest of the time for, uh, the items on staff. Agenda, um, I don't have any major updates, uh, this month.
Um, I don't really either. I just met with, I talked to her, it's already pretty briefly, and she said that she would be down to come talk to us whenever you want to. Ask her questions.
Okay.
Ask her questions, oh, about doing so.
And possibly there, well, thank you, just as a reminder, we can, it keeps going through an integrated replanting process right now, which is like twenty twenty five. We had discussed in this committee previously the possibility of engaging with, with in some in some capacity on that plan. Um, so, preserving the government affairs. Uh, did you have updates to do?
Um, probably since our last meeting, I have officially joined the organic waste task force. Um, with Monroe County Solid Waste District, so, um, we are working on, um. Some composting initiatives. So, uh, there will be updates about that, where, um, right now, the effort is, uh, going toward, um. Uh, establishment of more small piles, because the state doesn't regulate small piles, they only regulate big piles. So we're talking about community piles essentially that are the smaller. So it's the idea of of people allowing their neighbors to come and to compost on their property for people who would be interested in hosting that and people who. So, uh, Porter County apparently has a pilot project that they've been doing this, so we're kind of using them as a, as an example.
Keep U D O, U D O, because use of mine is pretty.
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure that all is kosher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, um, but so that that's that's my date.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, that, well, it's, we're all joined us online, but.
We had not.
Okay, um, but we can move on to update some city staff. So as I mentioned in the agenda summation at the beginning of the meeting. We have four items here, um, and about forty five minutes to, I could work on these primarily. So with that, turn it over to Sean Mia, uh, I think to to share updates first about the climate action dashboard.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate being here. Um, I provided that presentation, but I like to go through, um. Pretty comprehensive. So I'm prepared to actually provide an update on our climate action plan and presentation, um, thinking about the next one. And so our economic and sustainable development sustainability team, complete with myself, McKenna Nunschow is here, sustainability programs coordinator. And also our Canadian climate fellow that we have for the summer, um, on our house, so thank you for that, thank you, chair. Um, so our twenty twenty three budget, um, from our local income tax and ARCA funds was two million and ninety two thousand dollars. Our twenty twenty four budget from our local income tax, the ARCA, Creed and Tip Funds. Total two million, one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. And so, um, our climate action plan is published in twenty twenty one. Our main goal is to reduce Bloomington County greenhouse gas emissions twenty five percent below two thousand eighteen emission levels by twenty thirty. And achieve carbon neutrality by twenty fifty. And last year, last August, we published our most recent greenhouse gas inventory. It covers, uh, emissions from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty two. We hired the New York Trees Sustainability Institute for fifteen thousand dollars. That inventory is on our website, um, and it's also on the climate action plan dashboard. Um, if you go to the next slide. Um, so we hired Climate Nave, uh, last year for sixty thousand per year. We launched our dashboard on April of this year. And so, um, there's a link to that dashboard. I wasn't going to go through, um, comprehensively, because on July thirty first. Um, I'll be providing this update to the full city council. And Climate Nave will be there to help us walk through the dashboard. But you're free to go through the dashboard, it's it's live. Um, and and have a lot of things that I'll be covering tonight. So we've hired Climate Nave to create the dashboard. Um, it's, they're going to provide annual greenhouse gas inventory, um, quantify greenhouse gas emission reports, um, up to ten per year. So if we have, um, some projects where we, we want to quantify the amount of greenhouse gas emission reductions. That are a result of them, they can calculate that and provide that to us. So, um, say we purchased ten electric vehicles. Climate Nave will quantify the greenhouse gas emission reductions from those purchases. Um, they're also going to be helping with our regulatory and disclosure reporting, such as the T V P. And provide twenty minutes of product support. So we'll be walking through the dashboard on the July thirty first. So our climate action plans divide into eight sectors, and I'll be going through each of those sectors tonight, some talking about the climate actions that were. That we've implemented or are, and they go from towards implementing. And so the first one is transportation and news. So we recently installed two, uh, level two E V charging stations at Switcher Park. We moved every charger that was there to switch our maintenance facility for twenty thousand. Um, person, um, public works have funding allocated for them this year and. Um, Parks and um Public Works has funding allocated for them this year and. We've begun some initial conversations about installing Lexington's first level three DC bash charger. Uh, so that may be installed um this year. I'm a part of the regional opportunities initiative, E V charging task task force. Now, the R O I has hired the Bath Miller Group to conduct a a study within the Uplands Region. To determine the best location for E V charging stations. And so that study is going to be very helpful to us. We want to make sure that the chargers that we install are going to be used and are a good asset for our city. Um, so to decrease our vehicle miles traveled and to increase bicycle. Use, um, we have launched an E by voucher program. So we have contracts with bike smiths and Revolution Bike Convene for fifteen thousand each. Um, so general population can apply for a five hundred dollar voucher. And low income residents can apply for a thousand dollar voucher to purchase an electric vehicle, uh, electric bike. Um, so so far we have provided twelve loan, twelve um vouchers. For a total of six thousand five hundred. And so we're continually working with them and trying to. Through all this program and try to get more people to apply for vouchers. Um, again, the transportation and land use, um. One of our actions was to conduct a fleet inventory and E V implementation plan and Public Works is working on that. Um, so in twenty twenty three, we worked with Duke Energy to complete a fleet electrification segment. And so that um has a roadmap of how we can convert all of our existing fleet to electric vehicles that will. Require a significant investment to um to complete. But in twenty twenty three, we purchased three Chevy Bolt E Vs. And two Chevy Bolt E U V sedan uh for a hundred and thirty eight thousand. And again, the transportation and land use, um, so one of the actions is to introduce a policy to replace city off road and lawn equipment. With electric and low carbon fuel alternative option. So um last year, Parks and Rec purchased over a hundred and four thousand dollars worth of electric equipment. So that included things such as lawn mowers, sweep blowers, string trimmers and U T Bs. This year, um, they've been allocated a hundred thousand dollars and they've already started a list of equipment that they want to convert to electric. And so those are things that we're working on.
And and is this money for from the um, the portion of E D lit funds that are there a budget of climate action kind of legislation? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so uh we also, uh, the next sector is energy and built environment. And the goal is to increase distributed renewable energy to two hundred fifty thousand megawatt hours of total generation energy by twenty thirty. So a part of our solar energy efficiency and lighting program, which is our C E O program in twenty twenty three. We saw twenty eight kilowatt hour solar systems for five hundred thousand dollars. Um, we, for twenty twenty four, for um. Uh, we have totally, we have a total allocation of four hundred twenty five thousand. Uh, twenty twenty three, we encumbered a hundred twenty five thousand from our E D lit fund. And then we also have three hundred thousand from Creed. So this year, we're hoping to install seventeen solar systems by the end of the year. Um, so far, we've accepted seven applications, um, three from small businesses and four nonprofits. And McKenna let me know that we have, uh, received some additional applications. So hoping by the end of the year to install seventeen solar systems. So that's the solar port portion of our C E O program. Also, um, in twenty twenty three, for low income solar grants, we provided a hundred thousand dollars to uh Lexington Health and Authority. To install um a hundred and two kilowatt hours um, that are walnut woods units. Additional funding that's provided by B H A to install that bigger system. Um, in twenty twenty three, we also provided two hundred fifty thousand to Habitat for Community to install. Eight kilowatt hour solar systems on ten houses. In twenty twenty four, we are planning on providing a hundred thousand dollars to um B H A for their pressing up bands. For a total of forty one kilowatt hours. And for the B H A installations, we provided the solar uh arrays for those. We're also potentially going to provide a hundred thousand dollars to the Summit Hill Community Land Trust. To install, again, eight kilowatt hour solar arrays on their houses there. And then for the um energy efficiency and lighting part of the C E O program. Um, we provide ten thousand dollar grants for small businesses and nonprofits to um implement energy efficiency projects or lighting upgrades. In twenty twenty two, we hired I F F. Um, which is a nonprofit to conduct um energy efficiency audits. Um, their contract is worth fifty thousand. In twenty twenty three, we paid I F F for over fourteen thousand. Uh, their contract is currently expired and we're we're waiting for um their contract to be renewed and to be approved. Uh, in twenty twenty three, we allocated two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We completed four, I F F completed four energy efficiency audits. Four projects were completed for forty thousand dollars worth of grants. In twenty twenty four, we had a hundred eighty five thousand allocated. So far, we've completed one project and um it's pending grant to Google. Uh, that's worth ten thousand. And we proceed to additional applications. Um, energy and built environment, again, um, increase energy efficiency citywide. And so to do that, we issued an R P in twenty twenty three and encumbered two hundred fifteen thousand. And contracted with Jonathan Energy. Uh, they have a five phase contract. Right now, we're in phase one. Um, we're just finishing up phase ones, but that's uploading all of our municipal. Um, Duke Energy Center Point and Water Bills to and and building square footage. To our online dashboard called Brightly, which we pay um twelve thousand, almost thirteen thousand dollars subscription for each year. And so we can look at each municipal building and see how energy efficient or inefficient they are. Um, and so we're just finishing up that phase one portion of the contract. Um, it's been a little bit difficult with Duke Energy accounts. There's been, um, they they changed their system last year. And so we're trying to line up all of our accounts to our building. And so it's taking a little bit of time. Um, and then our phase two will be a desktop audit where they're going to assess and stack rank city own real estate assets. Um, this ranking will focus on identifying those assets that present the most significant opportunities for energy efficiency and de-carbization. And so we'll be moving into phase two soon. Um, so we're looking into um the capital improvement plans for public works and for approximately. And so there'd be a lot of information that'll be um setting. And then phase three, um, we'll be looking at phase one and phase two, and we'll be choosing which buildings will be moving into phase three. And phase three, then we'll be conducting the onsite energy audits at the prioritized city asset. And then phase four, we're going to be looking at those buildings and determining energy conservation measures. Um, and so there'll be creating implementation um designs, so engineer designs for those E C M's. Um, and uh so that will be complete with detailed financial and operational impact analysis. So we'll have those school cohorts of buildings. They'll be developing the energy conservation measures. So if for this. Group of buildings, perhaps they need new windows or new doors, or they need better insulation, or they need new H VAC systems. Also, we'll have those cohorts and it'll let us know if we complete this project, it's going to provide this much um. Financial savings. So as we become more energy efficient, it's going to reduce our operation costs. And then phase five will be, sorry, I had to go back once. So phase five is um implementation of the E C M. So they'll be helping us to issue the R F Ps and um. And follow through our project completion. So helping find the contractors, yeah.
Does it, will will the E C M's, will that include de-carbization measures? In terms of uh when we replace H VAC, will we, you know, convert it to grass or source geothermal? Sorry, correct. Geothermal or air source that keep keep pumps for water heaters and and space even things are.
Yeah, so phase three will help us with that because we'll be looking at those buildings and where it's appropriate if the H VAC systems need to be replaced. Do we have the space um to install geothermal systems? So. I'll tell you about a project here in Busford Chelmsford. We thought about geothermal there, but we don't have the space to do all the.
And then they explore air source options, like keep pump options then for.
Yeah, so I said, that's the R P was very detailed in saying that we not only want to look for energy efficiency, but de-carbization.
Okay.
And so um, so Donovan is already helping us identify some projects that we want to pursue. Um, so we applied for um the Energy Efficiency and Conservation golf grant. And we have been awarded a hundred and forty one thousand dollars. Um, so Donovan helped us to identify a project that we could fast track. And so we identified City Hall um L E D lighting retro equipment project. Um, and so we submitted that and it's been approved by the Indiana Department of Energy. And so we hope to complete that project by the end of this year. And so some of our lighting in City Hall is dated from nineteen ninety eight. So we'll be updating updating our L E D lights. Um, and then another grant that they identified is energy empowering energy partnerships in Indiana communities, which is the Ethic Grant. Um, we submitted a letter of intent to apply for this grant at the end of April. Um, so we, so I've worked with um, uh. So we, Donovan and and B S D, we meet with um Public Works and um Parks and Rec to determine which buildings and which projects we want to pursue. So it's a team effort. Um, and I'm thankful for their cooperation in this project. Uh, so we have identified Busford Chelmsford Theater um as a project that we want to pursue for energy efficiency and de-carbization. Um, so for the Ethic Grant, they really want to see um, community facing projects. And so Busford Chelmsford is the perfect location. Um, and so we're going to be proposing um solar installations, um, a full roof. Um, the theater lighting will be upgraded and um their H VAC system will also be upgraded. And so that grant does require a twenty percent match. And so we'll provide that from um our E D light funding. Um, energy and built environment, um, again, increasing energy efficiency citywide. And so for Hope Well, we issued an R P in twenty twenty three. We acquired a green engineer for a hundred and forty eight thousand from our support funds. Um, our goal is to achieve lead for neighborhood development. And the B certification shows that Hope Well is developed in accordance with sustainable practices. We have our Bloomington Greenhouse Improvement Program. Uh, this program's been around for a while. In twenty twenty three, um, seventy five thousand dollars was allocated. Um, so how the program is set up now is that you, whoever wants to receive a thousand dollar rebate. Needs to uh acquire a loan to um either Clean Energy Credit Union or Who's Your Host Credit Union. Um, so once they receive the loan, they complete the project, they can apply for a thousand dollar rebate. And last year, we only had five people apply for the rebate. And that has been pretty much since the program's been launched. And so. You can go to the next slide. In twenty twenty four, we're going to revise the program and we're pretty close to launching the new program. Again, we have seventy five thousand dollars allocated. But this time, um. People do not have to have a loan to receive the rebate. The loan is still available if people are seeking loans for their project. Um, but uh we are increasing the city rebate amounts, um, especially for low income residents. And so we're hoping that with these um revisions, we'll have more people completing energy efficiency projects. Um, and so we're also adding, it's an optional approach if they want to stack incentives. There's the Duke SmartSaver program. Um, where they can receive additional Duke rebates. Um, they have to go through a Duke pre-approved contractor for that. And then we also provide information about I R A tax credits. So within. By having the city rebates, the Duke rebates and the I R A tax credits. This will provide significant savings for residents to complete energy efficiency projects. Energy efficiency and solar. Um, energy and built environment and energy strategy is to increase solar on city facilities twenty percent by twenty thirty. Uh, we currently have thirty two municipal solar sites. We hired Bay Area in twenty twenty three for solar operation and maintenance. Um, so in twenty twenty three, we allocated seventy five thousand. We paid thirty six thousand eight hundred for O N M. In twenty twenty four, we have seventy thousand allocated. We have paid thirty three thousand for climate materials. To replace inverters, solar panels, electric panels that need to be repaired. And we paid nine thousand two hundred so far for O N M to date. Now, we also have a dashboard that we monitor all of our cer- our solar sites on. It's called also Energy. We pay fifteen thousand dollars per year for that dashboard. Um, E S G is the vendor who has sold all of our, uh, all of the thirty two sites. Um, they have submitted their first year performance guarantee savings report. And just, I believe it was Saturday, Friday, they also submitted their second year performance guarantee savings report. So that's. Um, have been submitted. Uh, we have installed two new sites. Um, this is a picture of Cascade's golf. Clubhouse. Um, it's uh, these two sites are managed by Parks and Rec. Um, so we, we sold those two sites for sixty thousand from twenty twenty three and hundred one. Uh, for wealth management, uh, increased landfill and solid waste absorption by thirty percent of two thousand eighteen values. To what we've done so far, um. We, in twenty twenty three, we funded, uh, we co-funded a project with Monroe County Solid Base District. We provided twenty seven thousand five hundred grant to one Sustainable Joe. Um, he is educating residents about composting and to begin composting onsite. So these are multifamily. Um, departments. Where he got this project. And so we're hoping to continue to fund this um program each year. Uh, Organic Waste Task Force, um, that we have, uh, McKenna is also on the task force. And so they're seeking funds to. Um, possibly find a place to have a local composting processing facility. Uh, we also have our twenty twenty four Bloomington Commission on Sustainability Sustainable Neighborhoods Grant Program. We have ten thousand dollars allocated for that. Uh, we provided Garden Quest with a thousand dollar grant for pilot residential terracycle project. Um, so for the Sustainable Neighborhoods Grant Program, um, a group of four residents can apply for a grant. That will um help to to initiate any type of sustainability project that serves all four families. So. Um, so that grant is available uh for those types of projects. Uh. Well, water and wastewater, uh, the goal is to maintain source and drinking water quality through climate related challenges. In twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, we are providing twenty five thousand dollar per year grant to support their legal quality protection. Projects. Um, again, in twenty twenty four, we have a B plus Sustainable Neighborhoods Grant Program. If a group of residents wants to install a rain garden. Um, there's a thousand dollar grant available for that. Local food and agriculture, uh, increased food and nutrition security citywide. Um, increased local agricultural resilience. And so in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, we provided Pigeon Hill Sporting with ten thousand dollars per year. To purchase locally grown food and distribute to low income family families. Um, twenty twenty three, and then also this, this pending approval, um. The Mother Hub is covered to provide two thousand dollars per year to support um their gardening program. Uh, twenty twenty four, also with the B plus Sustainable Neighborhoods Grant Program, if a group of neighbors want to get together and. Install, you know, raise garden beds or whatever they want to do to garden together, there's a grant available for that. And then I'm just starting a twenty twenty four urban gardening implementation team. Um, there's several people here that will be on that team. Um, and our goal is to increase urban burden throughout the city.
What what does the implementation team do?
We have, we haven't met yet.
Okay.
Our first meeting is um this Thursday night. Um, so last year, I held two community climate resilience workshops. To prioritize climate risk vulnerabilities and the um, the strategies to address them. And so what. Uh, rose to the top of the list is food insecurity. And so I'm good at security and string painting. And so I created two teams. From those, from that task force that I created last year, the urban gardening implementation team, B P team, implementation team. And so, um, we're just getting started. So, um, my, so we have a chair and a co-chair. Um, and they were on the climate resilience task force last year. And so it's just a continuation, huh? And so, um, it's been just right into the climate resilience plan. It's all under health and safety in our climate action plan. Um, so our goal is to educate, engage and empower the public for climate health and safety. And to prepare Burlington for climate risk and impacts. Um, so last year, we were part of the um Island Environmental Resilience Institute's Climate Resilience Co-Work. Um, we hosted the two climate resilience workshops with the community. Um, and then, so we prioritize climate risk vulnerabilities and the application. Um, and then, so we prioritize climate risk and vulnerabilities and we have education strategies to address them. I worked with our I T S department to create a climate resilience map, and that's on the, um, sustainability website. If anybody wants to take a look at it. So it has, um, our urban tree canopy data from two thousand and eighteen. It also has, um, satellite data that has, um, it shows different areas of our city that are hotter than others. Um, that data is not very accurate, and I'll talk about, um, how we're going to update that data in just a minute. So if anybody's interested, that map is on our website. And then we hope to publish the climate action, the climate resilience map this year. And I'm thankful that on our blog this year, we will be helping with that. And so to update that map, um, we applied to, uh, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration to be a part of the twenty twenty-four Heat Watch Campaign. And we were selected. Um, we will be paying fifteen thousand dollars for that project. Uh, this is a citizen science project. And so, um, between July twenty-sixth and August eighth, volunteers will be collecting temperature data to help map our urban heat islands. And so they'll be driving through predetermined routes throughout the city, um, three times, um, during one of, uh, one of those really hot days uh, between July twenty-sixth and August eighth. So, so we're looking for volunteers. If anybody's interested in volunteering or helping us to recruit volunteers, um, the more volunteers that we have, the more routes that we can map. Uh, so I'm working with our local meteorologists to determine the best day, um, during that date range. Um, once we have this updated, um, climate resilience map, we'll be able to understand and address, um, heat distribution across our city. And so we can identify the hot spots and determine where we need to increase our shrink canopy, where we need to shelter, um, bus stops and, uh, increase green infrastructure. We're also going to be collecting, um, P M two point five data. Um, that's the typical matter that's, that's extremely small. It's really important to have that information because P M two point five, um, the typical matter is so small, it's not making you go through your lungs and into your bloodstream, which is, um, detrimental to your public. And I put these two on here together because they overlap a lot. So health and safety increases the ecosystem. And I won't withdraw all those goals that. Um, so climate adaptation strategy implementation. So this falls more, we help with safety, you know, so green space, but, um, so uh, twenty twenty-four, three corridors. So whenever we have our updated map, we can see, you know, where are there low-income areas where people are walking to bus stops or parks or schools? And where we need to increase trees, uh, tree plantings. And then also I have funding for, um, sheltering those bus stops. Um, so I'm working with Bloomington Transit and also I'm looking at Hollywood Barn. We have a potential to not only shelter those bus stops, but to really create art in them. Um, Tree Tenders Program, we provide funding to campus Bloomington. It helps, um, uh, youth to understand, uh, how to perform tree maintenance. And so that's a, the program that's managed by Parks and Rec.
Do you, sorry, do you know, um, how, how many, or the shelter, sheltering bus stops, um, like that, that allocation, do you know how many stops that is for?
Um, it all depends if it already has a complete, um, slab there. Um, so that would be a significant portion of the funding. If they don't have those slabs, we have to install those.
Oh, we're talking like a few, like, like, like?
Yeah.
Three or four, kind of, I think.
Right. So, um, we wanted to, like, a pilot to see how, how much funding it will need in the future.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just have, I know we have a lot of, uh, a lot of those. And it seems like a, uh, an important equity issue and, and heat resiliency issue, for sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. But I'm working with Parks and Transit and we'll.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I add? Sean, I have a layer on the climate map that includes covered and uncovered channels and stuff.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the same app, the resilience back remission?
Yeah.
And you said that's on the sustainability?
Uh-huh. Well, it's on, um, the G I S.
Uh, cities.
If you, if you Google, um, city Bloomington climate resilience map, you'll find it.
Got it. Heard. Thank you.
And it does have the sheltered and non-seltered bus stops. Thank you, thank you. Um, and so additional climate adaptation strategy implementation, I, um, have a funding for fifty thousand for an A C distribution program to provide free air conditioning units to low-income residents with a medical condition that increases their, like, heat-related illnesses. And so air conditioning is not just for comfort, it's actually life-saving for people who have, um, medical conditions. But issued an RFP a couple of weeks ago, um, to hire an A C installation company. And I'm working with our townships, um, they will accept applications and process them. Um, because they don't have the capacity to do that. And they already have, um, you know, working relationships with people who are in need. And so once they have an applicant that, um, meets all of the criteria, it will provide those applications to me. I'll review them and coordinate with the applicant and the A C installation company to get those A C units installed. And, um, another part of health and safety, um, I'm working with the IU School of Informatics. Um, we had a fifteen thousand nine hundred service contract in place. Um, they've already hosted two workshops with, um, I had a B the Heat Innovation Team, uh, which consists of Monroe County Health Department, Monroe County Work and Management, um, nonprofits that care for low-income residents, um, M T D S C, B T, Duke Energy, and there's others that are on the team. Um, Fire Department, and others. Um, so we have two workshops to understand, um, vulnerable populations in Bloomington, to map our assets and to complete a mock heat wave scenario, um, which was very interesting. They, they had it, they had a heat wave occur on, on July fourth, during July fourth. And so City Hall closed. So what did we do? Um, and then, uh, also, you know, we have, uh, a massive heat wave and we have a brownout where we have power outage. And what do we do? So all of the information is going to help to inform our heat action plan that we're working on developing. Um, with its old informatics and with my team. And so the heat action plan, we're going to have specific actions that, um, the city, the county, and NGOs that we will all take, um, before and during the summer months, and especially during heat wave.
I think it's been going with the county health department and emergency management. I remember there was like a fair amount of turnover in the last few years in this. And I didn't remember that there.
Yeah.
The current folks are engaged.
Very much engaged. Um, so two years ago, I was on the Commission on Sustainability and created, uh, B the Heat.
Right.
Innovation team, you remember that one? And so I was working with them at that time. It's thank you.
Oh, is it? Right.
Yeah. I already talked about that. I put there in my notes. I really love that. I have funding for weatherization. Um, so I potentially might set up a grant agreement with SCAP. Uh, they already have a weatherization program. And so, um, this would provide funding for low-income residents to weatherize their homes, to lower their utility costs, increase their energy efficiency, and also, most importantly, to maintain healthy interior temperatures. And so I'm hoping that we can stack all of these resources for long-term residents who have health conditions where they can, um, have energy-efficient homes, they can have, uh, uh, air conditioning units. And so, um, SCAP is looking at their capacity to take on this project. And so if they don't, I will issue an RFP and just administer a program itself.
And this is for, um, code delivery potentially with the free A C program you mentioned?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Yeah, I'm worried about utility bill payments.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping with that, we're working.
And, and this would be for people who own or rent?
Um, I haven't really thought about if it would be for homeowners for weatherization. For the A C distribution, um, I'm saying it's for anybody, whether they rent or own. Um, but for its weatherization, I don't know. How that would work out if we have a landlord that's just not providing.
Well, I think, I mean, I don't really know, like, what requirements require to do in terms of weatherization and terms of.
Yes.
Those.
I don't think in the U D O we have those requirements there. They have, yeah, they have the requirements. So we could, I think, help with that. Because we have some of those questions about the requirements. Yeah, it would be pretty. That free access to swimming pools. And so I'm working with Parks and Rec to begin. They had this program a couple of years ago. And so whenever, um, we are under, um, whenever the heat index is ninety degrees, um, or above, then they would have free access to the swimming pool. So there's a tool that, an online tool that we can use that helps to forecast heat risk. And so, um, whenever we're at a level two, I believe, that's whenever we would provide the heating assessment. So there's something we're just now starting to work through. But again, I'm thankful for Parks and Rec's, um, population of all of our projects. Climate, I think we only have one of those left. And I'll just go through these quickly, but, um, so we've just started climate talks. Um, we provide this monthly, um, at Shurikar Park. So they're in person, they're also live. Um, so about climate change and health, fire rate tax incentives, battery power line equipment, tree species, resilient tree species and gardening. And then climate economy, the K L is working on a green workforce development project. So we have, if we have that located for that, I think that project forty-six is the last one you can. So project forty-six, um, I put it under climate economy. I don't know if it really fits there, but it should fit under anything because we're doing a lot of different things. So project forty-six is the regional climate line between Bloomington, Nashville, and Columbus. Um, so, so far, um, each city provides fifty cents per capita. So for Bloomington, we provided forty thousand in twenty twenty-three and the same amount for twenty twenty-four. In September twenty twenty-three, we formed our steering committee and we began meeting quarterly. In December, we, the three cities signed a random of understanding and signed a funding agreement with the, um, fiscal sponsor, which is the Heritage Fund of Bratell and the County. And then, um, we repeated that information, sorry. Uh, you can go back, uh, in March, March twenty twenty-four, we received a twenty thousand dollar donation from Cummins. We hired a consultant with our healthcare launch strategies for eighteen months for a hundred and thirty-four thousand. They're helping us to finalize project forty-six. We are currently working on our interim government documents which will lead us into developing our long-term governance document. And then we are also creating, conducting a regional greenhouse gas thing with Jordan. And February twenty twenty-four, we applied for the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant. Submitted eleven project ideas worth seventy-two million dollars. Um, I D A S selected six of those projects worth thirty-eight million. And we should know next month, um, whether the EPA will approve, um, items. Um, implementation going to application. So more soon.
Thank you. More questions?
No, I. Good job.
Thank you.
I mean, it's, it's a lot. And, and, uh, yeah, there's a lot of, of various things to be done. Um, I guess my one I state my level there, so many grant opportunities for residents. And I wonder how easy those are for residents to find and to learn about, especially, maybe you mentioned one that has been happening for a couple of years that doesn't have very much participation.
Right.
And I, I wonder about that at hand, too. They also have various grants. And I wonder how much residents know about the various grants that the city has.
One thing that I. Thank, thank, one thing I've thought of is, um, W F I U has a community minute. And so McHale is looking into how we can get on W F I U's community minute so that she can just drive all of the grants that are available. Um, and then we're going to start, um, going to the farmers markets, um, regularly. And, um, we're posting on our social media.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's on, on top of it being, how much do they know about it? It's also like, B G Hip is a program where a lot of people aren't going to invest necessarily in HVAC or water heater upgrades or whatever until it is necessary. And then I think, you know, like Sean mentioned, we're revamping the program a lot. And so previously, we required a loan, we required the project to have a certain, um, uh, meaning a certain minimum cost. Um, so there's a lot of barriers that in addition to the fact that Bloomington is a really high renter community, with life specifically to homeowners. So I think there's a lot of things for us to look at. We are finally now editing the program and revamping it so that the incentives are more worth it to pursue. Um, we removed the barrier of the loans, um, and are trying to re-promote the program as much as possible. So I think that we'll see a significant increase just through those things. Um, but yeah, like I said, I mean, I think it's a, it's a combination of how much are we increasing awareness? What other avenues can we take to increase awareness? Um, and then how do we get at, like, making this an important issue before it's needs-based and whatever else. But yeah. I mean, for all of our programs, I think it's, it's a matter of, like, you would think we have all this money out here. We have twenty-five thousand dollar grants for businesses and nonprofits. And we're still like, what can we do to get people to apply? You know, you would think you're giving out money and people would want it. But, um, yeah, for sure, it's the, it's a process to try to figure out how to get people to. Is there one place on our website that has all of these listed? Cause now.
We, we have our sustainability website.
Okay, but I mean, like, all of the city?
The city is working on, um, uh, some sort of website where you can go to and you can just put in some parameters and it'll tell you all the grants that you would apply.
Yeah.
That you could apply for.
They're transitioning all of the grants across all the departments to City Form. So, you know, previously, some departments that they can use, uh, Google Forms. We use, we have a grant portal and E S D that we utilize. So all of our arts and small business and city building grants are all in there. But the city is wanting us, they're having us all shift towards one platform, which is necessary then.
That would be helpful.
Yeah. And doing so, like Sean mentioned, people can go to the site, they'll fill out information about their incomes status, you know, where they live. Bloomington City Limits, Reg Limits versus nonprofits versus whatever else. And when you answer all those questions, it will tell you across the city, across the departments, these are the grants that you qualify for.
That sounds fantastic.
Well, let's, uh, we're nearing the end of the hour. So do you want to turn it over for general public comments? Oh. Thank you for, uh, ladies, uh, for your role. Um, please go ahead. If you guys have a question.
Thanks. So, okay, in brief, uh, Sean, really, uh, impressive. I, I was wondering a couple of things. One is, so the lifespan of a solar cell is, you know, twenty to thirty years. And so we're probably coming up on the halfway point for some of the, some of the panels we've already installed. Um, should we be thinking about a fund to, uh, for replacement at some point in the coming years?
Um, well, we do have, uh, a lot of panels in, uh, storage from the two thousand and seventeen installation that could be and as, it, the R G is, you know, monitoring all of our solar sites. And so once, if a panel is damaged, they're using our stockpile of panels to replace them. And so, um, I'm not sure we have about twenty-five hundred in, in storage. So those could be used as panels start to wear out. But yeah, I think that's something to start to consider.
We, we have twenty-five hundred installed, you say? Is that right?
Twenty-five hundred in the storage units in our.
Oh, in the storage. Got it. Okay.
They were to be installed at the, um, at the water treatment plant or the windscreen treatment plant, um, featured pool, but they never got stronger.
Got it. Okay. I, I'll, I'll just, I want to hear from public. So I'll just keep this. I'll just have one other question, and that is efficiency loss. Do we track that? Um, because efficiency is lost. There's a natural rate of efficiency loss for solar panels. And I assume there's some maintenance costs that are involved. So, I mean, for instance, for instance, just when I go outside, my windshield is covered with pollen. And I'm sure that this happens to solar panels, right? Do we have like a cleaning schedule to keep them at, performing at, at peak efficiency? That, that, do you happen to know? And, uh, resources put into that? Or there, do we have a maintenance crew that does that?
So we're here at B R G. They're our operation and maintenance vendor. And so they're cleaning all the sites and we have our dashboard and they're, they're maintaining all of the sites. And so I'm not sure if they're actually cleaning them, but if there's a problem at any of our sites, they'd go out and they'd check them. Um, but as far as cleaning them, I'm not sure because it rains and then the pollen gets washed off. So.
Yeah, well, I, you know, we, we, let's talk about it. Um, I just wonder if they're operating at peak efficiency, you know, year on year. So, um, but I'll, 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 I'll stop there. So we can hear from public. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, so are the members of the public that wanted to make a comment on, um, general items or the presentation? Uh, I would do a quick, a short answer.
And it, it.
Yeah, yeah. But you, you, you're right. Okay. Uh, general comments is also okay.
Yeah. Uh, so I've spoken into, um, you know, multiple neighbors about the program. If I see them. And the biggest fear that I, or what people tell me is I don't know how to write a grant. I'm scared. Is there any assistance, um, with helping? I, and I know how to write grants, but I can only spread myself. So then, so I'm throwing that out as a potential. Are there IU, I know there's IU classes that are more, you know, write a grant. Maybe that would be something that could be offered.
So if anyone's not surprised for the Commission on Sustainability Grant, um, there's commission members who have volunteered who say that. um, there's commission members who have volunteered who say that, you know, if there's anyone out there that's, you know, who's worried about writing a grant, they can just contact me and I'll forward it to the commission members. It'll help with managing.
Is that a lot with all the different grants that are?
I think it's one of them where residents are fine there, right enough. Um, there's grant applications online, but it's.
Yeah, all the other projects are more just straightforward, like democratic information, financial information. Yeah. It's less, yeah, if you're eligible and if you've completed a project, we just need proof of completion or whatever. It's not like a grant. I was sure of that information.
Great, I have, again, uh, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, I think our, our hope was to, to get on something like a quarterly page to, to have staffs who can go deeper on issues specific to like, uh, cap tracking and implementation. Because we, uh, don't get to this level of detail in, in council meetings, of course, or with an annual report. Um, and so, yeah, we very much appreciate it. And, and, uh, thanks to my items for follow-up and additional questions. But, uh, we are at seven o'clock or just after, and that's the intended time for the meeting. Um, so we can go ahead and, uh, wrap up. Uh, before we do, uh, final items on the agenda. Um, we have scheduling, uh, which is just that we are continuing to meet, uh, the first Monday of the month at five thirty. But I believe we might be taking July off, uh, during council recess. So next time we'll be back in, uh, the first Monday in August at five thirty. Is that correct, uh, Attorney Coolidge?
Yes, the next special meeting is August at, at five thirty, years from.
Thank you so much. Uh, okay, and then?
Well, I'm thinking about it, uh, in September, we're actually leaving on the second Monday. And I have a name session that night, so I will not be able to be in the.
Okay.
Well, I think about it.
It's the, the first Monday.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you all for your turn.